Our call to order the regular meeting of the City of Aransas Pass City Council, March 21st, 2022 at 5:30 PM. Let's all rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Father, we just thank you for your many blessings upon our lives. And although we're living in ever troubling times with pandemics and wars going on, we know, Father, that our faith in you will keep us strong and secure and give us the peace that passes all understanding. We just pray, Father, tonight for this community that we live in and we love. We just ask God for your direction and guidance. We pray for our council. We pray, Lord, that you'd give them wisdom. We pray, Lord, that your blessing would be upon us in this meeting. We ask all these things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, we're going to go to presentations and proclamations. And this presentation of annual audit report ending September 30th, 2021 with Ms. Brenda McElwain.
Hello. Thanks for having me. So you all have a copy of the audit?
Yes, ma'am.
The financial statements? So I think last year when we got together, I played a little video for you and tried to explain to you, you know, why you need an audit and what it really means. So I'm not going to bore you with all of that again. I will remind you, the part that you probably need to pay attention to starts on page nine. And page nine through about 20, that's the regurgitation of all of these other pages. And it puts it in real, it's a real condensed format. And it's also in a very easier to read format. So those pages nine through, nine through 20 is really what I would recommend that you all read. And if you have any questions, I'm certainly available to answer your questions at any time. So my audit report, I rendered an unmodified opinion. So the city has a clean opinion. The financial condition of your city is very stable. I'm not going to go through with ups and downs and ins and outs and all that because we'll all just go to sleep. But I did want to tell you just a little bit about what I experienced this year. I just want to give kudos to Sandra and her team for doing a really good job. They're doing a really good job. I did some surprise interviews with her staff. And I think the audit world is really, they're starting to really focus on fraud in government. I mean, that's a thing. It's a real big thing. And I think they're interested in our AICPA. They really want us to focus on that. So we have some new things that we're to do to, we're not going to give you absolute assurance that there's never been any, anything like that. But the steps that we take and that we've had to do, it gives you a little bit deeper insight to what's going on. And so when I, excuse me, when I did these surprise interviews, they were surprised. And I pulled them aside and I asked them some tough questions. And I want you to know, I was really pleasantly surprised with their answers. They were very forthright. They were very honest, very straightforward. They just answered my questions. And, you know, I asked them questions like, how could somebody steal money here? Show me. Let's talk about it. And it was just very interesting. So I just want you to know that the staff that Sandra has and is, they did a great job. And they're very competent. So that is, that's my anecdotal side of it. And again, I'm not going to bore you with all the numbers. But the city's fine. And do you have any questions?
What's our bonded indebtedness right now?
Your bonded indebtedness. So turn over to page 18. Table nine. You see it?
Yes.
Okay. So are we looking at that too? We are. So the governmental activities are the first two columns. And that's comparison of 20 to 21. And the total, if you look at the total, and then the next two columns are the business type activities. And then the last two columns is the total government. So let's focus on the last two columns. So in 20, the bonded debt was $21,610,000. And it went down at the end of 2021 to $21,310,000. So essentially paid off $300,000 of debt. And there were some new bonds issued and some old bonds paid off. So that was, that's the net effect of where your bond indebtedness is.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job as always. Thank you.
Now, we're going to go to the quarterly update on collections of municipal court fees and fines, October through December, with Stevens. I'll shut up.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and city staff. Thank you for having me here today. I'm going to give you a report on our collection activities over the last three months that the mayor just mentioned. This would be the period of October through December. And I'll have copies of these reports. Grace will be walking in here to hand them out here in a second. But over the last, over that timeframe of October through December, we mailed out 184 letters. We skipped trace. That means when citations were issued to individuals and turns out they had the incorrect address, we were able to locate them. And we were able to find 103 updated addresses during that time. We made 398 outbound phone calls and took in eight inbound. And during that period, we collected on behalf of the city, $20,239. And you referred to us during that period, an additional $35,000. And just a reminder for the council, usually what's referred to us impacts what the report is next time. So the more referred usually means the higher. But it just depends. And that's actually pretty high, given that it was over the holiday period. So I will have, I have copies of this. And she'll be here in a minute and we'll hand it out to you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
I don't remember what last year's numbers were at approximately this time. Are we doing better? Are we doing about the same?
You know, I should know off the top of my head. I don't. Let me, but I'll get you the answer.
Okay.
Get you the answer.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless a council member's request. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the March 7th, 2022, regular meeting.
I'll second.
Now, I'm going to open up public hearing for case number 2203-04, public hearing and a conditional use permit request submitted by Carmen Perez for six months to allow a recreational vehicle to be placed on lot number 12 of Tropical Breeze Manufactured Home subdivision zone GB General Business and use as temporary dwelling while waiting for purchase and delivery of a manufactured home.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This application is a conditional use permit. And the applicant is requesting that before the, she comes to put a manufactured home on the property, she would like to live in an RV. These type of cases do come before you where RVs are not permitted to be lived in. So they have to request for that permit. Last week, the P and Z approved the request and recommend that you grant this conditional use permit to a six month application. Thank you.
Say, if I remember from the P and Z meeting, she actually hadn't purchased the manufacturer home yet. Is that correct?
I think she purchased it. She was waiting on it.
She was waiting, just waiting on it? And we had no timeframe yet?
For it to get to the location?
Yeah.
No, but she's working on it. And she will have a space, I guess that issue also came up. She will have a space where she can put the manufactured home as well as the RV.
Do we all remember that?
Yeah.
Okay. And Tropical Breeze Manufactured Home subdivision is okay with her bringing in an RV to live?
Yes. So far, we don't have any negative comments.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Father, we just thank you for your many blessings upon our lives. Although we're living in ever troubling times with pandemics and wars going on, we know, Father, that our faith in you will keep us strong and secure and give us the peace that passes all understanding. We just pray, Father, tonight for this community that we live in and we love. We just ask God for your direction and guidance. We pray for our counsel. We pray, Lord, that you'd give them wisdom. We pray, Lord, that your blessing would be upon us in this meeting. We ask all these things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we're going to go to presentations and proclamations. And this presentation of annual audit report ending September 30th, 2021, with Ms. Brenda McElwain.
Hello. Thanks for having me. So you all have a copy of the audit?
Yes, ma'am.
The financial statements? So I think last year, when we got together, I played a little video for you and tried to explain to you, you know, why you need an audit and what it really means. So I'm not going to bore you with all of that again. I will remind you, the part that you probably need to pay attention to starts on page nine. And page nine through about 20, that's the regurgitation of all of these other pages. And it puts it in real, it's a real condensed format, and it's also in a very easier-to-read format. So those pages nine through, nine through 20 is really what I would recommend that you all read. And if you have any questions, I'm certainly available to answer your questions at any time. So my audit report, I rendered an unmodified opinion. So the city has a clean opinion. The financial condition of your city is very stable. I'm not going to go through with ups and downs and ins and outs and all that, because we'll all just go to sleep. But I did want to tell you just a little bit about what I experienced this year. I just want to give kudos to Sandra and her team for doing a really good job. They're doing a really good job. I did some surprise interviews with her staff. And I think the audit world is really, they're starting to really focus on fraud in government. I mean, that's a thing. It's a real big thing. And I think they're interested in our AICPA. They really want us to focus on that. So we have some new things that we're to do to, we're not going to give you absolute assurance that there's never been anything like that. But the steps that we take and that we've had to do, it gives you a little bit deeper insight to what's going on. And so, when I, excuse me, when I did these surprise interviews, they were surprised. And I pulled them aside, and I asked them some tough questions. And I want you to know, I was really pleasantly surprised with their answers. They were very forthright. They were very honest, very straightforward. They just answered my questions. And, you know, I asked them questions like, how could somebody steal money here? Show me. Let's talk about it. And it was just very interesting. So I just want you to know that the staff that Sandra has, and they did a great job, and they're very competent. So that is, that's my anecdotal side of it. And again, I'm not going to bore you with all the numbers, but the city's fine. And do you have any questions?
What's our bonded indebtedness right now?
Your bonded indebtedness. So turn over to page 18. Table nine. You see it?
Yes.
Okay. So, are we looking at that too? We are. So the governmental activities are the first two columns, and that's comparison of 20 to 21. And the total, if you look at the total, and then the next two columns are the business-type activities, and then the last two columns is the total government. So let's focus on the last two columns. So in 20, the bonded debt was $21,610,000. And it went down at the end of 2021 to $21,310,000. So essentially, paid off $300,000 of debt. And there were some new bonds issued and some old bonds paid off. So that was, that's the net effect of where your bond indebtedness is.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Brenda.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, as always. Thank you.
Now, we're going to go to the quarterly update on collections of municipal court fees and fines, October through December, with Stevens. I'll shut up.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and city staff. Thank you for having me here today. I'm going to give you a report on our collection activities over the last three months that the mayor just mentioned. This would be the period of October through December. And I'll have copies of these reports. Grace will be walking in here to hand them out in a second. But over the last, over that timeframe of October through December, we mailed out 184 letters. We skipped trace. That means when citations were issued to individuals, and it turns out they had the incorrect address, we were able to locate them. And we were able to find 103 updated addresses during that time. We made 398 outbound phone calls and took in eight inbound. And during that period, we collected, on behalf of the city, $20,239. And you referred to us during that period, an additional $35,000. And just a reminder for the council, usually what's referred to us impacts what's the report is next time. So the more referred usually means the higher. But it just depends. And that's actually pretty high, given that it was over the holiday period. I will have, I have copies of this, and she'll be here in a minute, and we'll hand it out. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
I don't remember what last year's numbers were at approximately this time. Are we doing better? Are we doing about the same?
You know, I should know off the top of my head. I don't. Let me, but I'll get you the answer.
Okay.
Get you the answer.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go to the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless a council member shall request. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the March 7th, 2022, regular meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I'm going to open up public hearing for case number 2203-04, public hearing and a conditional use permit request submitted by Carmen Perez for six months to allow a recreational vehicle to be placed on lot number 12 of Tropical Breeze Manufactured Home Subdivision Zone GB, General Business, and used as temporary dwelling while waiting for purchase and delivery of a manufactured home.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This application is a conditional use permit, and the applicant is requesting that before she comes to put a manufactured home on the property, she would like to live in an RV. These type of cases do come before you, where RVs are not permitted to be lived in. So they have to request for that permit. Last week, the P&amp;Z approved the request and recommend that you grant this conditional use permit to a six-months application. Thank you.
I'll say, if I remember from the P&amp;Z meeting, she actually hadn't purchased the manufacturer home yet. Is that correct?
I think she purchased it. She was waiting on it.
She was waiting, just waiting on it? And we had no timeframe yet?
For it to get to the location?
Yeah.
No, but she's working on it. And she will have a space, I guess that issue also came up. She will have a space where she can put the manufactured home, as well as the RV.
Do you all remember that?
Yeah.
And Tropical Breeze Manufactured Home Subdivision is okay with her bringing in an RV to live?
Yes. So far, we don't have any negative comments.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I declare that public hearing closed. And we go to consider enact an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Carmen Perez for six months to allow a recreational vehicle to be placed on, to lot 12 of Tropical Breeze Manufactured Home Subdivision Zone GB, General Business, and used as temporary dwelling while waiting for purchase and delivery of a manufactured home.
I move to grant a conditional use permit to Carmen Perez for six months to allow a recreational vehicle to be placed on to lot 12 of Tropical Breeze Manufactured Home Subdivision Zone GB, General Business, and used as a temporary dwelling while waiting for purchase and delivery of a manufactured home.
I just have, it does say on here, waiting for purchase.
That's why I asked that.
So, has, have you purchased it?
So I ordered one, but it's on backorder. Because the parts isn't there.
Can you come up to the phone, state your name?
I apologize. I thought it was at 6:00. So I have one ordered. It's coming from Waco. They're saying it's going to be at least three months before they can get it, because they still have to order more parts, and they have a backup.
Okay. But you, you...
I've been approved. I've already paid my down payment, everything. Everything's good. I'm just waiting for them to make it.
Okay.
Build it.
Then I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're going to go to case number 2203-05. We're good, ma'am?
It passed.
Thank you very much. Sorry to be late.
2203-05 is open a public hearing on renewal of a conditional use permit submitted by Greg Farrar with expiration date of August 7, 2022, to allow eight-by-forty shipping containers for storage purposes during construction of his home, Zone R7B, single-family dwelling, district at 1304 North McCambles Street, Aransas Pass, Texas.
Yeah. So this is an old application. It's a request for a renewal of a shipping container. He's come before you already for an RV, for him to live in the RV whilst he's building, finishing up the, his house. He's almost 80% done. And because the shipping container was there, was placed as a conditional use permit, the time has expired, and he's not completely finished with the project. He needs to request for a renewal. So he's requesting that you allow him to extend it to August 7. And I would like to inform you that the RV that he lives in at the site will also expire on August 7. So the P&amp;Z recommended that both expire at the same time, so he'll be able to move them from the site when his house is complete.
Did he, did you talk to him? Did he act like he was going to be ready?
Yeah. 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 He thinks so. He might be finished before then, but, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, I declare this public hearing closed. And we go to consider enact an ordinance granting a renewal of a conditional use permit to Greg Farrar with expiration date of August 7, 2022, to allow eight-by-forty shipping container for storage purposes during construction of his home, his house, Zone R7B, single-family dwelling district at 1304 North McCambles Street in Aransas Pass, Texas.
I make a motion to grant a renewal of a conditional use permit to Greg Farrar with expiration date of August 7, 2022, for shipping container for storage purposes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're going to go to case number 2203-06. I'll open a public hearing on a conditional use permit request submitted by Stephen Martin for a conditional use permit with expiration date of September 6, 2022, to allow a mobile food establishment to be placed in the two parking spaces in front of the Rialto Theater in the right-of-way of State Highway 90 Loop and operate while awaiting the purchase and installation of a commercial kitchen at the Rialto Theater, contingent upon approval by the Texas Department of Transportation.
Yes. So this is also another conditional use permit for a mobile food establishment. And you all know the Rialto Theater is functioning, but it doesn't have a kitchen. They are working on the kitchen, and it's going to take a while. But they want to raise funds for the theater, so they want to use that as a means to get the funds going. But there's not enough space, so they want to use the right-of-way in front of the theater. And in doing so, it is part of the State Highway 90 Loop. So we've sent a request, a letter officially, to Texas Act for approval. We've not received that yet. But last week, the P&amp;Z recommended approval, and up to the date, September 6. And so if you will approve this application, it will be subject to Texas's final approval of the use of the parking lot in front of the theater. So that is the case before you.
Do we have a clue when we're going to hear from Texas Dot?
We've, we've received, or they have received the letter. And in checking, double-checking with them late last week, it has been sent up, as they said, the flagpole. So they've received it, and they're, Robert Asasi is checking with his superiors. And I think it's incumbent upon us to stay in touch with them, to make sure that that continues to move. I don't want to anticipate a long time, but I can't say for sure.
I'm okay with it, you know, based on just waiting on the Texas Dot authorization. And is it going to be left there 24/7? I don't remember.
That is...
That was the, that was the thing that he needed to, he has to move it each and every day.
Texas Dot will not allow that.
That's what I, that's what I wanted to say. And with that, I didn't mind. I didn't, I didn't like it there all day long.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Okay. It came up at the P&amp;Z, and there was a conclusion that it will not, okay.
So it will only be out there during their hours of operation? Or it'll be out there more than that?
Hours of operation.
Oh, okay. And that's just...
They have to move it daily.
Okay. Okay. Well, then I'm okay with that, yeah.
And they said they were, they could live with that.
Any other questions? Okay. I declare that public hearing closed. And we go to consider enact an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Stephen Martin for expiration date of September 6, 2022, to allow a mobile food establishment to be placed in two parking spaces in front of Rialto Theater in the right-of-way of the State Highway 90 Loop and operate while awaiting and purchase an installation of a commercial kitchen at the Rialto Theater, contingent upon approval by the Texas Department of Transportation.
I make a motion to grant a conditional use permit to Stephen Martin with expiration date of September 6, 2022, to allow a mobile food establishment to be placed in the two parking spaces in front of the Rialto Theater in the right-of-way of State Highway 90 Loop and operate while awaiting the purchase of an installation of a commercial kitchen at the Rialto Theater, contingent upon approval by the Texas Department of Transportation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're going to go to the city manager, which is consider an act...
Mayor, I'm sorry, sir. I know that you just voted, but I'm taking a look at the actual ordinance that issues out the conditional use permit. And it says the conditional use permit shall expire on September 6, 2022. And that it should not be used for any other reason other than that request, and it may be removed after the need for the request. But it doesn't state that it has to be removed every day, Jose. So if that's a condition of the conditional use permit, then we need to amend that to read accordingly.
That it should include that it has to be removed daily.
I understand. It does not.
Right. Mostly, the...
Okay. Let me make sure my council understands.
I understood what you were saying.
Yeah. Yeah. I understood what you said, but...
Yeah. With the RV ordinance for food establishment, it requires that it be removed daily. Unless, of course, the owner of the property allows that. And that is a condition that is in there. So unless, of course, we want to state it, the ordinance has it that it has to be removed daily already. But we can add it to the ordinance that's supposed to be passed.
And again, want to point out that Texas Dot will not allow it to stay 24 hours a day.
That's what I thought. Yeah.
Yeah.
So say that again, Gary?
Texas Dot will not allow it to stay 24 hours a day, only during hours of operation.
Okay. That's why, okay. That's, that's why. Okay.
Yeah. So we can add specifically that is, the property, the owner has to remove it daily. We can add that as a condition.
All right. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, we're going to go to the city manager, which is consider enact on resolution approving a contract for the collection of delinquent special assessment between the City of Aransas Pass and Linebarger, Gogan Blair, and Sampson LLP, repealing all conflicting resolutions and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm going to turn this over to the city secretary and Steve also. Mary, do you have anything to say before Steve goes up?
No, I believe Mr. Salcedo is going to...
Okay, Steve.
It's 7.1 and 7.2, Mr. Salcedo.
Thank you. Thank you again for having me here tonight. What you have before the council, well, before I go into that, currently, we represent the county and the city here to collect all your delinquent taxes. With this contract you have before you, this will now allow us, when we foreclose on property, if there are any delinquent city liens, we will now be able to add that into our delinquent tax suit, where before, we could not. And that's essentially what you have before you. The second item on here, I will say, that's just a statement of facts regarding the qualifications of my law firm, and that's a statement that's now required by the legislature to pass in addition to the contract. And that happened a couple of years ago. But if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
I think this is exactly what we were looking for, to try to collect the liens on those properties. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve a contract for the collection of delinquent special assessments between the City of Aransas Pass and Linebarger, Gogan, Blair, and Sampson LLP, repealing all conflicting resolutions and providing for an effective date.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're going to consider enact an approving document titled "Action Approving Contract with Linebarger, Gogan, Blair, and Sampson LLP."
Steve?
Yes. This is the statement of facts that's now required by the legislature. Whenever you pass one of our contracts, we have to have an additional agenda item saying that we're qualified.
I make a motion to approve the document titled "Action Approving Contract with Linebarger, Gogan, Blair, and Sampson LLP."
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we go to consider enact entering into a three-year contract with Brenda McElwain CPA to conduct the city annual audit beginning March 21, 2022 and ending March 21, 2025.
Mr. Mayor and Council, at the staff level, we're discussing this. And we can't believe it's been three years already since the last time we approved this. But that's pretty clear. You stated it the way, that's what's before you. Brenda, I don't know if you have anything to comment on as it relates to the agreement, or Sandra, or...
Just the amount of work that we have to do, it's lengthy. It's about a 400-hour job. And with the, with the federal funds as a single audit, that's, you know, that makes it, that just adds a little complexity to it. So that's all I have to add to that.
Well, I really appreciate all that you've done, because you really have gotten the city, working with the staff and everything, that we actually have good numbers.
Well, I'd like to take credit for that, but I can't.
Well, working with Sandra, but I think you kept your thumb on her to get, to get everybody in the right direction. So I certainly wouldn't want to turn in a different direction right now.
No.
I move to enter into a three-year contract with Brenda McElwain CPA to conduct the city's annual audit, beginning March 21, 2022, and ending March 21, 2025.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Now, we go to consider enact a resolution suspending the May 2, 2022 effective date of the proposal by Centerpoint Energy Resources Corporation, DVA, Centerpoint Energy, Intex, and Centerpoint Energy Texas Gas, South Texas Division, to implement interim rate adjustments for gas utility investments in 2021 and requiring delivery of this resolution to the company and legal counsel.
Yeah. Centerpoint has submitted an application for a rate adjustment, and that's going to increase the rates, the gas rates to residential customers by $2.11. This is going to increase from $24.92 to $27.03 per month, and it's scheduled to go into effect May 2, 2022. The only action the council can take is to suspend the increase by 45 days. If you take action, that's, the action that's posted, that's what it'll do, is suspended by 45 days. No action, and the increase will go into effect May 2, 2022. There is a representative here from Centerpoint Gas. If you have any questions, they're in the audience.
Mayor, city council, city manager. My name is Rich Silva. I'm an operations supervisor for the Centerpoint Energy. Like Ms. Quade said, we go through this every year. Every five, no more than five and a half years, we have a rate increase with the railroad commission saves. Centerpoint, you went to $28. You went a little too high. You're going to have to drop it. And that's what they did the last time. This is just an interim, interim, a gas reliability interim rate. What we do, for example, what we do with this is, if we have a leak somewhere at a customer's house, we don't repair that steel line. We replace it with polyethylene line. We replace the whole thing with a new riser, new pipe. We're not doing no bandages on our pipe. And that's what we're trying to recoup on our, on our infrastructure, on the, on the gas. And what you, like Ms. Quade said, you suspend it where you give the Centerpoint Energy customers, instead of going into effect May 2, it'll go into effect, the railroad commission will suspend it another, another 45 days. And it'll probably go into effect about June 16 to some, 17, something of that day. You give them more time before it goes into effect, if you suspend it.
With this rate hike, when would be the next rate hike? A year from now?
Yes, ma'am.
Everything's going up. Okay.
So if you want it suspended by 45 days, then you would take action on the resolution.
Okay. I'll make a motion to act on resolution suspending the May 2, 2022 effective date of the proposal by Centerpoint Energy Resources.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to go to the monthly court report.
I think they are submitted to you, I believe. Mary, this is a submission, submission date. Is that correct? Okay. So you have it.
So we go to community enrichment. The monthly community enrichment department report, February 2022.
Same thing.
Okay. Now, we go to development services. Consider enact an awarding request for proposals for use of the softball field complex to Roland Peña beginning March 21, 2022, through December 31, 2022.
Evening, Mayor and Council. This is, same as every year, we go out for bids. Once again, we only receive one bid, which was Roland Peña, for $525. He did increase it $20 more a month. It'll be for the use of the fields for his tournaments. He does understand that on the contract, it wants to begin any field work. Once that work begins, the fields turn over back to the city. So he would only have it for those months that it's available. And he's okay with that.
I make motion to act on awarding the request for proposals for the use of the softball field complex, Roland Peña, beginning March 21, 2022, through December 31, 2022.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we go to consider an act and awarding the contract to Coastal Bend Demolition Incorporated for the demolition of 134 and 106 West Wheeler Avenue for an amount not to exceed $49,500.
Mayor and city council member, my name is Roxanne Catronio, and I'm your city attorney. This is one of those demolition properties where we just could not get the property owner to comply. We had to spend a significant amount of city staff time presenting this particular property to our Building Board of Standards and Appeals, who actually listened to a substantial amount of evidence. If everyone knows where Wheeler and Commercial are, you'll see those four structures there that are falling on top of themselves. The Building Board of Standards and Appeals ordered the property owners to demolish the structures within 30 days. The property owners did not. The city went back to the Building Board of Standards and Appeals and asked for permission for the city to proceed with the demolition order. They granted that permission. We are, have received the bids. We received three bids for the demolition of all four of those structures. The lowest bid was in the amount of $49,500. The great news is, is that the minute that we got those bids, the property owner appeared. And the property owner has decided that they want to pay that amount of money to immediately have it demolished. There is asbestos on those structures. We have spoken with the demolition company, and we have to get two-week pre-authorization from the state to do the asbestos removal. We believe that April the 14th and April the 18th, is that correct, Tito? The structures will be, started to be demolished, or be demolished? They'll start on April 14th or April 18th? Good news, they're coming down. Wheeler and Commercial will look like a whole new place, and hopefully, the area will be sold with something productive for our community. Thank you.
Yeah, they already have four sale signs on the properties.
So rest in mind, that doesn't mean that they're not going to be demolished. Now, what I would like to do is, just in case that property... Now, the property owner has sent half a check to the demolition company. I saw a picture of it. And just in case they don't do it, the city wants to proceed. So if you'll give us permission to move forward, just in case they don't, but if for whatever reason, we're able to make sure that they use their funds, rather than having the city use their private public funds to place a lien on the property, then that would be really great.
Are we going to be able to recoup any of the costs that the city invested in these properties?
If, in terms of the enforcement action, probably not. Although, a really good idea to think about, our main goal is to get them down.
Absolutely.
And as far as we can get them down, we really don't want to have to use city public funds, right, to do so? Because if we use city public funds, then we have to lien the property, and the public funds are gone for use on any other item. But the Building Board of Standards and Appeals, certainly, the city council and the community had outrage over those four structures and the condition that it causes our downtown area. So we moved forward with the enforcement, April 14th, April 18th. Mark it on your calendar. It's marked on mine, for sure. We're going to have a party when those things are down, and hopefully, no city funds involving the demolition will have been used.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Thank you.
We don't need to make a, we don't need to...
I shall request that you do so, just in case.
Oh, okay.
Just in case, if we don't use it, we don't use it. But just in case, I don't want to have to come back to the council.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we award the demolition contract to Coastal Bend Demolitions Incorporated for the demolition of 134 and 106 West Wheeler Avenue for an amount not to exceed $49,500.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we go to consider an act and approve a change order, number one, to contract with Gerkey Excavation Incorporated for the DeBerry Saunders Greenwood Storm Rain in the amount of $6,595.06.
Mayor and council, this one is one of the projects we're doing under CDBG grant funding. It's deburying greenwood, the ones we're getting the complaints on the dirt. We took this section out and brought it to you now because in order for them to pave, they got to throw that curb down. This curb was not originally part of the project. There were some conflicts with the storm minutes that they had to take the sections of curb out. So we bring it to you now so we can get approval and get the roads paved. If we were to wait longer, then we got to go three to four weeks before paving. This is through the grant, so it should be covered 100%. Once we get approval, we're sending it through the process of the grant too, but we couldn't wait for them to give us the approval because then we were going to have to go another month with the dirt road. So we wanted to bring it to you now and get permission to get it done.
If I can add to that, we get complaints on the dust about every day on this project, without exaggeration.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve change order number one to the contract with Gerkey Excavation, Inc. for the DeBerry Saunders Greenwood Storm Projects in the amount of $6,595.06.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're going to skip the monthly public works report, monthly building department report. And we're going to go to the finance, which is considered an act amending the Aransas Pass purchasing policy.
Sandra said she wanted the opportunity to explain this to you in detail. So it'll be about three hours, something of that sort.
This is just a formality for one of our grants. We were just recently audited on the grant itself. And the finding, the only finding that they found was that we needed to update our procurement procedures for federal grant purchasing. And that's really what it is before you, is updating a very small section of the policy that is adding... Do you have the rest of it?
There is no...
No, it's each one of five. You want to go back to it?
Yeah.
Sorry, Gary.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, there we go. Yeah, no, it's further down within the policy that we, that it was added.
It's on page two, Sandra.
Is it on page two? Okay, sorry.
That's page two.
No, no, one more down. That's page one of the policy.
Go up.
Down.
I'm getting busy.
Sandra.
There you go. And it's under city, it's towards the bottom, where it says, "City of Aransas Pass will adopt, or will follow CRF 200.234 for contract cost and price." That is what we're adding to the policy itself. We're adding that section. That was the finding of the audit, and we needed to include that. And then return this resolution back to them, saying that the council did approve that.
Any questions? That didn't take three hours.
I know, I'm very exaggerating.
I just lost it.
I make a motion to amend the Aransas Pass purchasing policy.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to skip the monthly finance department report, and we're going to go to the public safety, which is considered an act on awarding the animal control construction phase two bid to GeoFill Construction for an amount not to exceed $77,500.
Thank you, mayor and council. I have Captain Jones here, who will take any of your questions or commentary on this. We've gone out a few times for our animal control facility. We've had to break it up into phases or pieces to get people to bid on it. And this is going to be Phase Two. Again, this expense is something that the Crime Control and Prevention District was going to be covering. Captain Jones, what else you'd like to add?
He already stole everything I was going to say. The bid, we only received the one bid. When we went out this time, $77,500. And we would like to go ahead and proceed with that as budgeted.
And crime prevention, how is the amount already?
This is within their budget.
I make a motion to award the animal control construction phase two bid to GeoFill Construction for an amount not to exceed $77,500.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we go to consider an act on the issuance of a request for proposal for disaster cleanup services in the event of a hurricane or large-scale disaster.
Thank you, mayor and council. And this is an emergency management item that we bring back to you. And that is, DRC is our debris collection company. They expire this year. We did use them, if you recall, after Harvey. And they have quite the undertaking. And their contract comes up, so we'd like to go out for bids. Of course, we're hopeful they will bid too. But, you know, we want to see if there are better options available out there, something more fiscally responsible for the city.
I make a motion... What were you going to say?
Go ahead.
Yep. I thought you already had a question.
Nope.
Nope. Okay. I make a motion to act on the issuance of a request for proposals for disaster cleanup services in the event of a hurricane or large-scale disaster.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to skip to the monthly public safety and the monthly fire department, and we're going to go to... Do you have the call?
We're all the guys.
They were on the call.
Uh-oh.
Sorry, guys. All right, well, we got monthly stats.
Roland, they're all in the thing. We just were going to present the check to the fire department for the fire install. Come on, stand up here. The debt, they see for over $125,000. And what is the fire department going to use?
Uh, function.
I'm going to be more proud of the community for turning out and everything that they've done this fall with my committee. They helped me out when I had to go work family emergency. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this is stats for last month, fire stats. Seventy calls total for February. If we turn to the next page, it's more of a breakdown of what kind of incidents we had last month. If you guys want to see that. Fire inspections, we did 17 fire inspections last month. And training, we did 46 hours of training last month. And it also tells you what kind of training we had. You all want to see that? Specific things that we do throughout the month. So that's it. Any questions with anything?
Thank you very much.
Well done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to go to the city council for staff announcement.
There is a work session coming up on the 28th, mayor and council. One of the items is the, a possible proposal for a marketplace at Combs Brown Harbor. I think the newspaper did a short story on that, on that possible item also. We also will be talking about, at this point, 25-foot lots, assuming we're prepared for it. That's been, we've been thinking about that for a while and working on that for a while. And hopefully, we'll be able to have that on the 28th. Also, city transportation for seniors. And Jason, Councilman Knight, is the one who brought that forward. And right now, it's on the March 28th agenda. The voucher system for transfer station, that is an item that we want to talk about to streamline the process for people who work after late hours and aren't able to get into our offices in order to get a voucher. So we're seeing what can be done to help with that inconvenience for some people. And the city council agenda format, we want to talk about the agenda to help streamline that possibly, if you're open to it, and see if there's some way to make the meetings go a little faster, if, in fact, you want to go that way. It's something that most cities do, quite frankly, but...
Oh, but we love them being so long.
What's that?
Said I love them being long.
Oh, I'm sorry. So right now, and as you know, it's a dynamic agenda, so it can change. We can add to it, take away from it, but that's what's there at this point. So, thank you.
Now, we're going to go to citizen comments. Citizen comments are intended for the matter that is not scheduled in the agenda. Please leave your comments to three minutes and state your name and address with a record. Be advised that the Texas Open Meeting Act prohibits the city council from responding and discussing your comments. The law authorizes the following. Make a statement of factual information, recite existing policy. Advice that this subject may be placed on the agenda for this subsequent meeting.
Any comments online, Mary?
Okay, now, we're going to go into executive session, which is Section 551.071 of the Texas Open Meeting Act, to meet with his attorney to seek legal advice on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the city council under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state part of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act. And Section 551.072, deliberations regarding the real estate property as it relates to, number one, commercial contract with 630 Ransom Island Partners LLC, formerly known as Blue Water Partners LLC, for unimproved property within a duendum of special provisions for Nuaces CAD number 3803108, 28.61 acres of land in Ransom Island Track 7, commonly known as 630 East Ransom Road, Aransas Pass, Texas. And we're going to take number two off. And it is 616. Reconvene, we're gonna reconvene in open session to consider take action, if any, on any item discussed in executive session, and then six twenty-eight.
There is no action to be taken. I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.